Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Let it be known, today is April the first. It's at six o'clock. And now can everybody stand and salute the flag with me? Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, you may be seated. Are there any changes to the agenda?
I have none.
Okay. Do we have council's approval for this agenda?
I make a motion.
Okay, the motion has been made by Mayor Pro Tim Singleton, seconded by Councilman Ramirez. Roll call please.
Mayor Pro Tim Singleton?
Aye.
Councilman Ramirez?
Aye.
Councilman Atkinson?
Aye.
Councilman Horn?
Aye.
Mayor Ramsey?
I also vote aye. Thank you. Okay, number two, we'll go to awards, presentations, appointments, and proclamations. We have one swearing in of firefighter paramedic Arnold Dangren. I'm gonna have a hard time with that last name.
Arnold Dangren.
I did say it right, okay.
He did say it right. Good evening. We're here to recognize our newest firefighter paramedic, Arnold Dangren. Arnold is filling the vacancy in the fire department to bring us full staffing. Arnold was born on the island of the Philippines. He was raised in Los Angeles most of his life and moved to Fresno in 2011. He's married to his wife Julie, who's here tonight, and they have three daughters, Emma, Olivia, and Harper, who are here tonight. He's been in EMS for about fifteen years, ten of those as a paramedic. He comes to us from American Ambulance and Sanger Fire Department.
Raise your hand. If you have to me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Arnold Dangren.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm?
Solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend, that I will support and defend, the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of California. All I am supporting and defending, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of California, that I think that I would be free without any mental reservation or purpose of leaving. Without reservation or of leaving. And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am not there.
Want to say anything? I just wanted to say thank you for giving me this opportunity. Just really honored to serve the community of Linga. I know I'm in good hands with the chief and the captains and the firefighters. They're gonna get guided me through. I can't wait to learn and grow. And again, I also want to thank my wife and my kids. They're my biggest support in this. So I just want to say thank you so much for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Glad to have you aboard. Do you like a picture with all your guys? Yeah, no, they're gonna, we're gonna get a picture. Come on up here, I'll follow you guys. For one minute. Thank you, guys. Okay, next, we go to citizens' comments. Or do you know what? Sean? Could you check outside to see if anybody's outside needs to come in? Okay, we'll just wait a second, we got some extra chairs here, so. Yes. That's what surprised me, that we didn't have anyone. I don't want to have anybody locked out waiting to get in, yeah. It's happened before. Okay, thank you. Okay, we have citizens' comments. This section of the agenda allows members of the public to address the city council on any item within the jurisdiction of the council. Members of the public, when recognized by the mayor, should come forward to the microphone, identify themselves, and use the microphone. Comments are normally limited to three minutes. In accordance with state open meeting laws, no action will be taken by the city council this evening, and all items will be referred to staff for a follow-up and report. Is there anybody in here? Shannon, do you have anybody?
I do have one person who has their hand raised.
Okay. Are you there?
Hold on just a moment.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you should be allowed to speak.
Pardon me?
Um, the person is, yes.
Okay. This is Greg Cody, citizen. First, I'd like to say I understand there is a time limit here. So Ron, I believe you're the timekeeper. I realize I have three minutes. Ron, Mayor, first I want to say that I could go on for hours about all the good things you've done, and the respect I have for you, and I'm sure you would give me that time. Unfortunately, tonight is not one of those times. I still have respect for you, but there's something I need to say. I believe it's fair to say you all at least have an eighth grade education, so you understand that the citizens have their First Amendment right, and I'm gonna exercise it at this time. Mayor Ramsey, I've had to use this meeting to address you because it's a well-known fact that you don't answer citizens' emails, telephone calls, and things of that nature. So unfortunately, this is the arena where I can address you respectfully. On seven twenty-seven, two thousand twenty council meeting, Mayor Ramsey, you stated that it is very important for council members to put a lot of thought into their decisions and to have the stamina to stick by them. Well, I was pretty proud when I heard that, because it's a well-known fact, that's not how things have been handled in the past. Unfortunately, since that statement, you yourself have broke that three times. And it's also known as flip-flop. Several years ago, you all had the stamina, the council did, the existing council, to vote in the code of conduct. That's something that I agree with, there should be the stamina to support and enforce. Unfortunately, that's not being done. We currently have, and by it not being done, we currently have two investigations of two council members that is costing the citizens tens of thousands of dollars. On March fourth, two thousand twenty-one, Mayor Ramsey, Councilman Singleton were in a meeting in the city manager's office regarding a councilman's countless acts of bad conduct and potential litigation. At that time, it was brought up where Councilman Singleton had made a very despicable, derogatory, insulting remark towards a female city official. He did have the integrity to admit doing so, but that is not only sexual harassment, it took the code of conduct off the charts. Mayor Ramsey, you were there when he admitted it. I don't want to go on and on, but I'm calling upon you to censor Councilman Ray Singleton. Now, you've given him a promotion since, and I don't object to that, but I'm calling upon you to have the stamina to enforce the code of conduct and censor him, or two, your second choice is just abolish the code of conduct altogether, because it's costing the taxpayers tens of thousands of dollars. It's hurting a lot of people. You guys are like a bunch of village halfwits up there, and
I actually gave you four minutes.
Oh, okay, well, you got your two requests, and the public's gonna see how you handle it, so, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Shannon, is there anybody else?
No, I don't have anyone else at this time.
Okay, well, thank you, Shannon. Okay, we're good item number four, public hearings, we have none. Number five, consent calendar. We have approval, we have eight items. Approval of minutes of March eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Check register for February second, first to February twenty-eighth. Number three, authorize execution of a task order with the city engineers for primary preliminary design and construction engineering for the fire department parking lot improvement project. Number four, waive the second reading and adopt ordinance number eight-four-six related to reducing the cannabis distance requirement from schools. Number five, approve five five filter accuators valves for the water treatment plant. Number six, approve agreement with Fresno City College for instructional services. Number seven, approve pro-care service agreement with Striker Core. Number eight, adopt resolution number four-zero-one-eight approving self the purchase of self-contained breathing apparatuses for the fire department. Is there anything that anybody would like to pull? Okay, is there anything from the audience that everybody, anybody would like to call? Seeing none, I'd like to see if we could have a motion for or against.
I make the motion to approve.
Motion's been approved, is it second? Okay, motion's been approved by Mayor Pro Tim Singleton, seconded by Councilman Atkinson. Roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Singleton?
Aye.
Councilman Atkinson?
Aye.
Councilman Horn?
Aye.
Councilman Ramirez?
Aye.
Mayor Ramsey?
I also vote aye. Uh, motion was approved. Okay, we'll go to number six. Ordinance presentation, discussion, and potential action items. Number one, fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two budget, requested budget discussion and direction. Jasmine?
Good evening, council. Good evening, mayor. Good evening, good evening, staff. Greetings from San Diego. I'm in sunny San Diego right now, and it's beautiful. It's sunset time, but glad to be here. What I have presented before you, you should have had it in your agenda, is a copy of the first draft of the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two proposed budget. In this draft of the budget, the component that you see is the operating budget, and so I'm not gonna go through it fund by fund, or page by page, or line by line, but I will entertain any questions that council staff or the residents have from this particular draft. However, I do want to let you know that the next draft of the budget to be presented on April fifteenth council meeting will have personnel portion of the budget, and so that's truly when you see a complete picture of what the expenditure portion of the twenty-one, twenty-two budget looks like. And so that's all I have tonight, but I'd be happy to answer any particular questions that the council has once again, or staff, or any members of the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Jasmine. Any questions from council? Okay, I think, I think what we really want is, when we see the complete budget, that's when we'll have all the the main questions and stuff. Okay. There's no question, so thank you very much, Jasmine, but I think you'll get a lot more questions when we have the other numbers in here too, so.
Definitely, no, I'll be ready for that.
You must have done a pretty good job on this, because like, nobody really has any, a lot of questions, and I know we can come into your office anytime and ask you questions, so, thank you for that.
Yeah, I know, most definitely, and I am available via email to anybody else, staff, council, or even the residents, and so I look forward to presenting the next draft of the budget at the April fifteenth council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll go to item number six point two. Discussion and direction regarding Unlimited Scale Racing Association, USRA event at the Klingon Municipal Airport. Mercedes?
Good evening, mayor and council members. Staff received a request from the United Scales Racing Association to hold an event at the Klingon Municipal Airport, and we have Mr. Jeff Wheelis, who will do a quick presentation and then answer any questions the council may have. Mr. Wheelis, are you ready to present your PowerPoint presentation?
I am. So let me get, get it started up right here, and can everybody see my screen now?
Yes, we can see it.
Okay, great. So just as introduction, again, my name is Jeff Wheelis, and I'm the Western rep for the Unlimited Scale Racing Association, and also principal of the nonprofit Fly Low, Fly Fast, which is the sponsoring organization for the event. And so we had contacted Mercedes and looking at hosting an event at the airport in mid-October, which is our annual national competition for giant-scale model aircraft. And so typically, we come in, it's a group of, depending on the, you know, the time of year and all of that, typically between twenty and forty pilots, and we converge, these are giant-scale airplanes, and typically, they're about ten-foot wingspan, two hundred and fifty miles an hour, so very fast, and it's very similar to, if you're familiar with the Reno Air Races, and so these are, these are model aircraft on that. And so what we put together is an event, it's focused on the racing, and then with that, you know, we tee that up, and you know, in terms of giving back to the community, in terms of an opportunity for fundraising, for local organizations, and involvement with science, technology, engineering, math, typically will coordinate with, with the schools, and you know, if anybody wants, if they want to come out and check it out, both during the weekday or during the weekend on that, and then just promote the activity. And so we're very keen on y'all's airport for a variety of reasons, and one is the location, there's, there's a fast-growing group of folks within the Fresno area around that in terms of of interest in racing aircraft and large-scale aircraft. And then as well, the weather is very conducive as well, and so we've typically been holding it in Southern California, but we typically get blown out quite often with the strong winds and all of that, so it's a combination of weather and interest within the region, and then it sets up for economic development from, from y'all's perspective, as well as the, the educate, the education component. And so if we go up, it's basically modeled on the Reno Air Races, and it's, it's pretty cool in, in terms of fast, loud airplanes, and all of these are hand-constructed and, you know, set up to go very quickly, and, and we've got folks coming in from all over the country, and sometimes even all over the world, in terms of participating, and, and folks are, it's everything from youth who are racing, to small business owners, airline pilots, engineers. We have some folks working for NASA doing some really cool stuff with their plane, so a good spectrum across, you know, across the folks that are participating in the event. And, you know, in terms of, of, you know, looking at it, what, what's in it for y'all, so to speak? As, as we've gone through the event, we typically, we try to buy local on everything in terms of, you know, promoting accommodation, purchasing services, all of that, and as we go through, our economic impact is usually over between thirty and forty thousand dollars locally per event, and then we work through, you know, using gate, gate revenue for donations to nonprofits and things like that. And so we see this as a win-win opportunity, promotes the city, it promotes science, technology, engineering, math, and provides, it pays for itself in terms of economic impact within, within the city. And then in terms of what we would actually be proposing is we put together some, some temporary pylons, they're basically short ten-foot poles that people race around, and we have a judges station, and so there's no permanent fixtures or anything like that, and of course, we've put in you know, portable toilets and things like that, and then, and then, you know, in terms of COVID mitigation, in terms of whatever is in place, in terms of promoting social separation, things like that, and then we work through, you know, in terms of, from a risk management perspective, put together an operational risk management plan, coordinate with police and fire departments, just so everybody's familiar with, with what we're doing, in terms of, you know, that we've been safe with, with regards to handling of fuel, things like that, and so that everybody's aware of what's going on for the event. And then all the folks, we do a daily safety briefing, and all the equipment goes through a very extensive tech inspection, all of that, so it's not unlike automobile-type, type events where there's a strong tech inspection element of it, because everybody, we want this to be safe. It's a hobby, it's a, it's a pastime at the end of the day, and so safety is absolutely paramount in terms of what we put together as an event. So you should have received, I believe, a proposal, and as a packet along with this presentation for your consideration. And with that, I would like to, I guess, open it up if there's any questions you might have.
Is this open to the public, and do they have to pay anything to get in?
Uh, we've run it a couple of different ways, but yes, we do promote it as being open to the public, and then we run it typically as a suggested donation with the, with the gate going, the gate proceeds going to local charities.
Very good, and, okay, so you just asked for donations, that's it?
I'm, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
You just asked for donations?
Yes.
Set price to get in?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
Now, the poles you were talking about are, are they, are they put on the airport itself, or, or?
Yeah, they're actually, they're set back approximately one hundred feet off of the runway, and so we adhere to the out, the restrictions from the FAA in terms of how high things can be. It's about, they're about ten feet tall, and they're similar to like a small, like, if you'd look like a radio mast, and they would have the light, they're, they have lights on them so that people know when they pass them, so that they can turn and go, go the other direction. And they're just held together with guidelines, and then we typically just drop them down when we're through racing for the day, and just, they just lay on the ground, so there's no, but there's no digging or mooring or anything like that. It's, it's, everything is, is temporary and, and set up to be pulled off with no, no lasting impact.
And how many poles do you use usually?
Uh, we have, there's two poles, one on either end, there's a pylon one and a pylon two, and then there's a central, we put a timing clock and a start-finish line in the center.
Okay. Uh, would, I've seen the races on TV in Reno and stuff, and they're pretty neat, and I think this would be just about the same thing, because you, if you're, if you were there watching it, it's pretty good, and the size of your planes, they're, look like they're a pretty good size.
They are, they are, and so they range from, from about eight feet in wingspan to eleven feet in wingspan. And then they're, they're run on the, the sort of more introductory classes are run on gasoline, and then the high-performance, the unlimited class, they're actually run on, run on alcohol, and so those planes are going about two hundred and fifty miles an hour while they're racing, and all of those, they have straight pipes, so it's really loud, and everybody gets, it's pretty exciting to, to witness it, even if you're not racing.
Right. Excuse me. Uh, now, you, do you have radios that can talk to the regular pilots? Also, if, if somebody's flying by and needs to land, what, what do you guys do in a case like that?
So we do monitor the frequencies, and that's something that everybody's familiar with, and so what we do is we'll just immediately bring the planes down and bring them in, so that usually takes just a couple of minutes. And most, you know, I'd say a fair number of the folks are pilots, myself included, and so everybody knows the routine, knows airport operations, knows how to communicate on the radio, and when a plane comes in, they're usually radioing, you know, you know, several mile, ten, twenty miles out, so there's plenty of time to actually, you know, orchestrate that, but we've come down, you know, we've come down very quickly and, and, and free up the runway.
So you, you guys have your own radios that have, that you would know what was going on with the other planes, then?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
And then we, we run the races, we run it under, you know, both having the airport shut down, as well as keeping the airport open, and with the latter, you know, obviously, you know, with a low number of operations, you know, that's important. Obviously, planes are coming in all the time, that's not, that's not conducive for, for, for either, either parties.
Right. Oh, well, okay, any other questions?
Yeah, if, if, let's just say if a business wanted to set up a vendor structure there, how would they go?
Nonprofit, basically.
Okay.
Yeah, we're a nonprofit, and then, you know, what we, if, if, you know, for example, we would certainly want to have food vendors there, so, you know, setting that up, and if anybody else, we've had, for example, we've had Boy Scouts setting up to sell popcorn or things like that, so we're certainly completely open to that, and, and, you know, the actual operation of, you know, we rely on the pilot fees and sponsors for our operational expenses, and then, you know, anything, you know, additional to that, you know, whether it be donations at the gate or other businesses, obviously, whatever licensing arrangements you would have would have to be, you know, adhered to, but we, we set up so that it's a, it's a, it's a local event and fosters local folks to participate.
Oh, nice, nice. I mean, how many planes would you, were they be participating?
Uh, typically, we would have, typically between thirty and forty planes there, so pilots could participate in multiple classes. We have five classes ranging from introductory, which are, you know, like a hundred and fifty miles an hour, and, and, you know, stock planes all the way to the highly modified, you know, aerospace engineering-grade aircrafts, so between thirty and fifty planes.
Yep, thank you, and thank you for considering our Yep, thank you, and thank you for considering our, our town.
Well, thank you for the, the consideration.
Now, on, on pop-ups, uh, you know, do you allow pop-ups for, uh, spectators?
Um. You know, typically we have folks bring chairs and, you know, we haven't actually had people ask to bring, to bring pop-ups. Uh, that would, I guess, probably be something that'd have to be discussed with y'all in terms of what y'all would want, um, in terms of that. But typically folks are bringing, uh, chairs and then just, you know, sort of single cover, you know, uh, umbrellas or things like that. So we try to make sure everybody stays hydrated and all of that, so.
I just wanted on that, I just wanted to get a heads up for that a little bit. And then, uh, we can, we can talk to Mercedes more and, and learn more on that too, so. That'd be real good. But, um, any other questions? Right, it sounds like a, a good program to me and, uh, and then we could either have. Now, did you say that, uh, the airport would be open or, or you ran it both ways?
Uh, we, we've run it both ways and there's pluses and minuses to, to either. And so it just sort of depends on, on what y'all, what y'all want to do. Uh, it's probably the, 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 uh, you know, the biggest factor on that and we can.
So. It starts on Thursday and goes through Sunday, basically?
Yeah, so we have a setup day on Wednesday where we just sort of lay out and measure and, and, you know, set up the, uh, um. Where all the safety barriers would be and then Thursday is, is a practice day, uh, tech day, and then Friday, Saturday, Sunday is the event.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you very much for all your information and everything, um. Okay, gentlemen, what would you guys like to do? Would you like to go ahead and try this and set it up?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to move forward with this.
Okay. We have a motion, uh, from Councilman Atkinson, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
And a second from, uh, Councilman Ramirez. Roll call, please.
Councilman Atkinson?
Aye.
Councilman Ramirez?
Aye.
Councilman Horn?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Singleton?
Aye.
Mayor Ramsey?
I also vote aye. Well, I think we're gonna have, uh, a good time in October, so hopefully this is a good event for everybody.
Great, well, we, we, again, we, we thank you and then what we'll do, I guess, next steps is we'll have a couple of folks come out, do a, a quick site survey. And, uh, then we can start working, working through all the details.
Yeah, you can do everything, uh, right through Mercedes, we shall help you out there.
Okay, great, well, thank you very much.
Okay, well, thank you. Okay, next we have announcements. Marissa, do you have any announcements?
I do, um, I wanted to, um, first apologize to the public, I know the council knows I'm not in attendance in person tonight because I had eye surgery this morning. So, um, if I sound like I'm far away, it's because I am, I'm connected via my phone. Um, but we have a, uh, mortgage and utility payment assistance program going on that has money set aside specific for Colinga. Through Self Help. Um, it is on the city website and I've also posted it several times on the city Facebook page. And for whatever reason, we're not getting very much utilization. And I know that there's people out there who have, um, past due utility accounts because we can see them on the city side. And so, um, we are gonna be mailing that information out to people, trying to, um, promote the program more to get people to apply. The application is not too lengthy and at City Hall, we can help anyone with the application if they need help. So I just wanted to say that during the council meeting, that it is for mortgage assistance and utility assistance for anyone who has had a financial hardship. Due to COVID nineteen, uh, between March twenty twenty and today. So, um, if anyone is interested, they can reach out to us. Um, my number at City Hall is nine, three, five, fifteen, thirty-three, extension one, eleven. Um, or they can pop into City Hall or, um, send an email. But we can print the application, I know that not everyone has printers at home. So we can print the application for anyone who needs it, we can help them fill it out, we can scan and email it to Self Help for them. Um, but we're just there as a resource to help, uh, because we need more utilization of the program, there's hundreds of thousands of dollars there. And we're not getting very many applications for it.
Okay, does this can, uh, also, uh, include businesses or is it just residential?
Uh, this is just residential and it's not rent, it's just mortgage and utilities.
Okay, mortgage and utilities, okay. Thank you very much. Any other questions for her? Okay, any council members, uh, announcements? Okay, seeing none, mayor's announcements, uh, I just wanted to let everybody know that, um. Mayor, uh, Pro Tim Singleton and I and, uh, Marissa, uh, talked to our Congressman David Valadeo. And we're still trying to go after that money that when we, we said we're essential. And, uh, so we've, uh, got somebody that's gonna try to, to work for us. I mean, uh, TJ Cox tried it, uh, one time before, but we never really heard much coming back from him. So hopefully, um, Mr. Valade- or Congressman Valadeo will help us on this. And, uh, he sounded pretty, uh, positive about it, he didn't really know what he could do, but he's, he's gonna do what he can do. He's gonna write some letters first and then go from there and then we'll just take it as we can get it and just go from there. Uh, and I also met with, um, a, um, a group today that, remember the group that brought in about the cigarettes and the vaping and stuff like that? They're, they're coming back and they're starting another program and, uh, Marissa's gonna send you a, an email that I got from them. Outlining the whole, uh, whole, uh, system and stuff, so he sent it today. I don't know if you guys have received it yet, but, uh, you'll probably get it when Marissa comes back and stuff. But, um, it's on her email and, uh, so you guys will be really interested in that and too. It's, uh, sounds pretty good and they wanna, uh, be part of Colinga and they, they're actually even wanting to hire some more people from Colinga, so we'll have representatives here. They have one representative here right now and, uh, they're looking for more. And so, and they're, they're, it's just more of an educational thing, but they're actually going out and doing more things and it's. Too many to, uh, tell you right now, but it'll, when you go over this list, you can look at that and, and, um, go for yourself on there. And that's all I have. Is there any future agenda items?
Yeah, I was wondering if we can get an update on the water park, uh, for the next meeting, figure out where we're at.
The water park?
Yeah, I know we had talked about possibly moving it, uh, don't know where that's at, but, uh, hopefully.
Yeah, we haven't heard, uh, back from the, the people we asked about the land being donated and stuff, it was, it's a trust deal, so we were. Sometimes trust are hard to.
Yeah.
To deal with and, uh, so go from there. But that would be a good spot.
Yeah, it would be, so maybe an update just to find out where we're at, even if we're gonna move forward with what we already have there. Also, um, these iPads are, are junk, um, I can't even use mine half the time. And when we start going to conferences here, once COVID dies down, I think we're all gonna need some new ones. I have ten emails that I've sent that won't even go through. Um, we, when we go to conferences, uh. The two new guys haven't gone yet, but we'll be utilizing our iPads and we will need a connection as well, a mobile connection. And a keyboard as well, we have these, um, there, there's tablets now that you can buy that have keyboards on them, even when we're up here, uh, I like to. Type or whatever.
Right.
And so I'd like to see us get some new iPads, uh, some type of tablet that gets rid of these ancient things that should go in a museum.
Yeah, if anybody has anything like that in mind, we could, uh, have them give it to Sean or Marissa and then she could send it out to the rest of us and. Uh, we can kind of pick and choose and see what.
Yeah.
And, but when we do pick and choose, we'll probably do, do it all the same, so everybody's the same, but you know what I mean by pick and choose and stuff, so just. Uh, we'll go like that because these have been a lot, when they first came out, they were really good, but everybody's gotten. More stuff at home and everything else and, and doing things, so I, I agree with you, we, we talked about that a little bit before, so. And even the staff, uh, a lot of the staff has the same thing we have here too. Okay, she, she can bring that up on our, our future agenda, anything else?
Yeah, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
The, which water park, the, the water pad out here?
It goes Splash Park.
Splash Pad.
Okay.
Pardon me? Oh, Splash Pad, yeah.
If you guys are having issue getting ahold of the, the person running the trust, we, I can get ahold of them. You know, I can get ahold of her, uh, that's, that's heading the trust.
Okay. Okay. Okay, we'll see what we can do then, we'll give you, you know her name and everything, right? Yeah. Okay, and then we'll see how they go from there. Okay, I, I guess that's all. We're, we're gonna go into close session, we have two, uh, items, conference with legal counsel, existing, um, litigation. Government Code Section five, four, nine, five, six point nine. D, number one, City of Colinga, ICMA Retirement Corps. Case number one, six, CG, zero, 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 eight, two. And number two, conference with labor negotiations, Government Code five, four, nine, five, seven point six. City negotiators. Uh, Marissa Trejo, City Attorney Mario Zamora. Emporium Organization, non-represented, representative employees. Thank you guys and everybody, uh, have a good night.